Please stand for the pledge. Cecily, roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Thorstad.
Here.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
President Pro Tem Muller.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
Present. Let the record show that there are seven present and no absence. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There is one meeting minutes in there.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Muller.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Let the record show that there are seven ayes and no nays to approve the meeting minutes. Recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. We have a life-saving award before we get to public comments. So.
Yeah.
Chief Ogden.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. We do have a couple of life-saving awards that I would like to present tonight. We have Officer Sanchez and Officer Potter. If you both would come up here and stand, I know that might feel a little bit awkward just standing in front of council, but we really want to honor you tonight. So today we honor Detective Potter and Officer Sanchez, who through their decisive and skilled actions actually saved a life here on October 1st of this year. For Detective Potter, on October 1st of this year, he responded immediately to an emergency involving a serious injury caused by an accidental discharge from an old gopher shotgun trap. Demonstrating remarkable composure and skill, Detective Potter assessed the scene, applied a tourniquet to control severe bleeding from the victim's thigh, and stabilized him until further medical assistance arrived. Detective Potter's timely intervention and expertise made a direct and life-saving difference. And for Officer Sanchez, he also responded to this call. He, upon arrival, quickly assessed the need for additional support, and then acting decisively, he applied a tourniquet to the victim's forearm, effectively presenting further blood loss and ensuring the victim's survival. Officer Sanchez's calm judgment and proficiency under pressure underscored his dedication to the values of the Sweet Home Police Department and his commitment to the community. I just wanted counsel to know that the Life Saving Medal is one of our highest honors at the PD that we can bestow on our officers. It's presented to those who perform extraordinary acts of heroism, who through their decisive and skilled actions save lives. Detective Potter and Officer Sanchez exemplify these qualities, and their swift response to this recent emergency prevented a tragic loss. And so I just want to say to both of you, I'm super thankful for you. I'm thankful that you were working that night. I'm thankful for the training that you've had for applying the tourniquet and for saving a life. I'm just super proud of you both. So with that, I have two medals and a couple of certificates. Am I on? I'm on. Just so council can see, this is what the Life Saving Medal looks like. It's pretty cool. So for Detective Potter, here's yours. Congratulations. And here is your certificate. And with that, let's give Detective Potter a round of applause. And for Officer Sanchez, he has the same medal. And that as well. Let's give him a round of applause. And I just want to say thanks to the community that showed up tonight to honor them and also the family. We know that the job can be taxing and shift work. I know this happened on a night shift, and we're super thankful for the family's support as well. So thank you both.
Thank you all. I do want to say thank you as well to family members. I know that it can be stressful to send your family member off, especially in the evenings like this. And I'm just grateful that we have such quality officers who care about our community so much and want to save people's lives. I just appreciate each and every one of you. So thank you all for being here. Well done. I like doing those. I mean, I don't like that somebody had to be saved, but.
Yeah, I do too.
We have a good community.
We do, yes.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Now, moving on to public comments, we have two that would like to speak. So first one that I got a notice for is Fran. Fran, do you mind if I skip over that middle name and say Bronson? Please come forward. Give your full name and your address for the record, please.
You hear him? Okay. Fran Lushenko Bronson. You're going to be quizzed on at the end. Okay. 6313 Lake Point Way, Foster, Oregon. "I am here briefly, very briefly, representing my husband Ken, who couldn't be here but wanted to be here." So he sent me a text. So I'm going to read it. It's very short. "I, Ken Bronson, thank the people of Sweet Home for electing me to a position on the city council. I look forward to serving on the council and all of you for the next four years. I'm sorry I cannot be here to thank you in person."
Thank you so much. That was very kind of him to send that. Thank you for coming. Next one is Del Garber. Del, if you can come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Delmer Dennis Garber. I live at 1221 Tamarack Street. I'm here. I know there's been a lot of controversy over stop signs. I'm all for stop signs, which brings me here. I live near the corner of 12th and Tamarack, and it's a really bad right angle, 90-degree turn. The traffic flies down from Mountain Shadows, hits that corner, and it's constant. I've seen the telephone pole taken out, the fire hydrant. My fence has been taken out twice. And I just would like to request stop signs, one at the end of Tamarack and one at the end of 12th. That way they have to stop. Because on October 29th, there was a bicycle car accident there, and he was really quite hurt. And it's just a matter of time before it's a child. So that's basically my concern, because I just, I don't want to see anymore. It's like a racetrack on that street. It's crazy. But they come around the corner and they just hit the accelerator. They come down from the trailer court and hit that corner, and it's just dangerous. So.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Staff, we can maybe add that to the Traffic Safety Committee agenda as well to evaluate that?
Yes, we will do.
Thank you so much. Yep. Thank you for being here.
You bet.
Moving on to the next item on our agenda is old business requests for council action granting the city manager pro tem hiring authorities.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, here we come again. We did this back in September. Excuse me. So the purpose of this RCA is to seek a motion from council to approve some hiring. To give you a little background, as you remember, in September, council approved the starting of the hiring process for a few essential roles. And I'll just remind you that it was the planning and building permit technician, the code enforcement officer, the community services officer, and police officer. So we've started those, and since that time, we've identified potential candidates for the planning and building permit technician, code enforcement officer, and police officer positions. To add to this, additionally, there is a new vacancy due to an internal promotion for the accounts receivable specialists. And as you know, currently, the city manager pro tem lacks the authority to make final hiring decisions on these positions without council consent. And so this request seeks to gain that approval to move forward in a timely manner. Just to let you know, each of these positions have been budgeted for this fiscal year. There's no additional financial strain for filling them. So that's what we have before you. The options that you have are to do nothing or approve the authorization for the city manager pro tem to complete the hiring process for these positions. So it has been started. We just need to complete it. And if staff or if council has any questions, be happy to answer those.
I'd like to thank you for your due diligence in this matter. And with that, I would like to make a motion to accept as recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept this as recommended. Any discussion of counselors? Hearing none. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Muller.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve that RCA. Moving on to new business, we have proclamation for 2024 city council election results. I will read that proclamation now. "Whereas the City of Sweet Home Charter sets the form of government to include a biannual election to elect four counselors from the city at large, and whereas the three candidates receiving the highest number of votes shall each hold office for four years, and the one receiving the number of votes next to the three highest shall hold office for two years. And whereas declarations of candidacy were voted upon in the general election held on November 5th, 2024, and whereas the results of said election have been counted, canvassed, and returned. Now therefore, I, Susan Coleman, Mayor of the City of Sweet Home, do proclaim as follows: The outcome of the voting on the council positions described above was Brandy Wysonfrick, 843, Jennifer Victor, 1278, Matthew Bechtel, 1133, Aaron Barstad, 1213, Ken Bronson, 1490, Elaine Evans, 473, Chelsea Augsberger, 1331, Don Miller, 469, David Lowman, 1091, Angelita Sanchez, 1566, Erin Hagie, 1731, Regina Hayes, 462. Erin Hagie, Angelita Sanchez, and Ken Bronson shall fill the four-year terms. Chelsea Augsberger shall fill the two-year term, proclaimed this 12th day of November, 2024. Congratulations to those filling terms." Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Request for council action, contract approval on-call professional engineering services.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council again. This one has been a long time coming. So this is for a contract approval for on-call professional engineering services, so an engineer of record. So a little bit of background and context, and you may know this already, but I'm going to go over it anyway, just so we have a full picture here. But the city currently does not have an engineer of record or an in-house engineer. And so instead, we've been working with that through a contract with West Yost Associates. They've been in holdover status since it has expired in September of 2024. And so in anticipation of this, staff issued a RFP, a request for proposals, that ended up closing in August of 2024. And so four firms actually responded, and an evaluation committee selected three firms based on the qualifications and the scoring. And so those were, the three that were chosen there were Civil West Engineering, the Dyer Partnership, and West Yost Associates. Historically, the city has partnered with a single engineering firm for all services. However, this is a little bit different. This RCA proposes contracting with multiple firms to enhance flexibility, broaden expertise, and allow us to assign projects to the most suitable team based on specific needs within the city. These firms will support the city in conducting essential services such as traffic studies, evaluation of in-house projects, which can be a lot of different things. And then I just want to say that having multiple firms on call will increase our access through these engineering services for healthy competition. The arrangement would encourage each firm to deliver high-quality work and innovative solutions to maintain and grow their partnership with the city, ultimately ensuring that we receive the best possible services. So as financial impact, the costs for the services are already included in our annual budget. And then, since we don't actually have a body on staff, there should be a little bit of savings, as we would not have to pay benefits, you know, like insurance and retirement. So with that, council has some options. You can do nothing. You can have staff solicit additional firms or approve a portion of the recommended firms, or staff's recommendation is actually going to be option four. It would be approve all contracts, all three of them with those engineering firms, giving us some more flexibility with assigned projects and what would be most appropriate for those. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Personally, I like the idea of having multiple contracts engineers available to us. So my only question is, who came up with the idea of doing multiple? I thought so. Thank you, Cecily.
It was me. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of counselors? There's RCA before you. Madam Mayor, may I make a motion to approve the number four option, all three, or awarded contract of engineer of record?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. Cecily, please call for a vote to approve the RCA.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Muller.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve the RCA for the contract approval. Moving on, reports of committees. Are there any reports from committee members or liaisons? Hearing none. Moving on, department reports. Library Services Director, anything you would like to highlight from your report?
I would just like to highlight that in an effort to be more communication, we've started a monthly newsletter, which I've included a copy here. It's also going to be available via an email list and be able to pick up a print copy at the library.
I really like the newsletter, just so you know.
Thank you.
It looks great, and it's really good information. So thank you for including that. Any questions of counselors regarding any of the reports that are in our packets?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
PD, I just have a couple of highlights from our stats. Looking at our stats, the total crimes in October had a slight increase from September with a decrease from 181 in August, and then year-to-date decrease of 3.1% from 2023. So I thought that was interesting. And then, if you noticed in there, our traffic enforcement officer has been busy. Year-to-date traffic analysis for financial responsibility laws, I see that we have a 19% increase for citations there. For rules of the road, we have a 25.5% year-to-date increase for citations in that category. And it looks like DUIs on the year are 35.7% increase. So traffic enforcement officer is out there working. He's busy. And he actually told me, I think it was last week or maybe the week before, he's finding it a little bit more difficult to find speeders and some of these violations, which is actually a good thing. So it's working. So anyway, just wanted council to be aware of that.
Thank you for pointing that out, because that is what I anticipated would happen, is once the word gets out that people would start to slow down. So thank you also for hiring a traffic safety officer and the work he's doing. Next item on the agenda is reports of city officials. So now you get to put on your city manager's hat, and yeah.
Yeah, I will put on my city manager hat. I have a few things on here. I just want to say congratulations to our new council members and our current council member, Counselor Sanchez. I just wrote a few words here. I just wanted to take a moment to personally congratulate all of you. Your willingness to step forward and take on the responsibilities of public service says a lot about your dedication to this community. Serving on the council, as you all know, is no small task, and I look forward to working with each of you as we address the needs, challenges, and opportunities ahead for Sweet Home. We all share the same goal of making this city even a better place to live, work, and grow. I'm excited to see the fresh perspectives and energy each of you will bring to the table. Congratulations again, and welcome to our council, and I'm looking forward to what we will accomplish together. So, yeah. Veterans Day, I wanted to take a moment to thank everyone who attended our Veterans Day celebration last week at City Hall. It was a great opportunity to meet some of the community members that came out and recognize our veterans and show appreciation for their services. Also wanted to, as we, you know, just celebrated Veterans Day this Monday, want to extend my heartfelt thanks to all of our veterans in our community. The service that you bring to our nation, I'm just super thankful for, and just wanted to say thankful, or thank you for that. So thank you, veterans, for everything that you've done and continue to do for us. A brief update, not much new on the Green Peter drawdown. Last week, we had a meeting online with the Army Corps of Engineers, and they told us that there was about 30 feet left that they had to do for the drawdown. I think most of us have noticed that the waters have been pretty muddy and turbid. However, our team, I just want to give kudos to our Public Works staff, Greg and his team there at the water treatment plant. They've been doing an absolute phenomenal job. They've been able to report that they're producing high-quality water and successfully maintaining full reservoirs. So I just wanted to say thank you to Public Works for all the hard work that they're doing there. The next thing I wanted to highlight was staff's commitment. I'm going to piggyback off of what Megan said. Staff's commitment to improving communication within the city out to our residents, ensuring that everyone has access to good information. So with that, one of the things that we are going to be moving forward with here in the very near future is modernizing our website. So it's a little bit clunky right now, if you've ever been on that. And so I think this update will make it more user-friendly, visually appealing, and easier for everyone to find what they need on there. Along with the website, this is pretty exciting, there's going to be accessibility with ADA compliant tools that improve navigation for folks that have disabilities. And so this keeps us in line with recent federal regulations, and this upgrade will be very helpful, I think, for a lot of people. Also, with this service, we're going to have a new text and email messaging service. So basically, we can push out information via text message, and at the same time, if we want it to, it can also send an email for people who are willing to sign up for this service. So please, I would encourage the community, when we roll this out and launch it, don't be shy. Sign up for this stuff so we can push out information to you all. So we're pretty excited about that. And I think, oh no, I've got one more thing. The last thing that I would like to share with council and the community is we have the annual Shop With A Cop. That's going to be on December 7th. So if you know people who may want to apply to Shop With A Cop, the applications for that are online and at the PD, so you can come by the PD and pick that up. We will also have a teen sharing tree, and the tags for that tree will actually go up during the week of Thanksgiving. So it just gives the community an opportunity to come in, grab a tag off the tree, or two tags, or three tags, go out, shop for a teen. And if you want to wrap it, bring it back to the PD, and we will get those delivered. So we're super excited about that. I'm thankful for our volunteers who organize that, and for Sean Morgan, who oversees that. So we're pretty excited about that this next month. So with that, that is all that I have.
Thank you so much. I'm going to say it wrong. Intern, city manager, pro tem, or whatever. I can't say it correctly. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor's report. I just want to say thank you to you guys for implementing the update to the website that will include the text messaging, because we have the emails, but that's not how most people communicate these days. So I just appreciate that observation of that and making that happen. I also want to say, I think you picked up another volunteer at the veterans event last week. Somebody was here, and they said that they want, they're going to the PD. So I just want to say.
Great, we'll take.
To volunteer. So that was a wonderful event. So thank you, staff, for making that happen, and thank you to all veterans and their service to our community. Usually, council has just one meeting in November and December, as the second meeting falls right before Thanksgiving or right around Christmas. So I would need a consensus of counselors in order to do the same for this month and next month. So if I can get a consensus of council, that would be beneficial. Would you guys prefer just one meeting for November and December?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. I got a nod. So I think I've got a total consensus that we will only have one meeting for each of these months. So thank you for that. I want to also just announce that there is an opening on our Planning Commission. We had a nice meeting right before this meeting of joint meetings, but there is an opening. So Planning Commission, I believe that's an in-city limits position that's open right now. So if you know anybody who would like to be involved in our community, that is a great way to do so. They can get an application online or from Cecily. Also, there's some cool things that are coming in our community. On November 26th, Shem applies to orders food, usually in a 6,000-pound range, to provide for the families that they help. And lately, they've only been getting 1,500 pounds of the food that they've been requesting. So they had contacted somebody for some advice on what to do about that. The person, they had applied for a grant, and that didn't work out. But that person made a phone call, and a semi-truck of food is arriving at Shem on November 26th. They are getting 26 pallets of non-perishable food for just our community, and that's a huge benefit to our community and what a surprise, right before Thanksgiving. So if you are interested in helping unload that, you can contact me. You can contact Satina Tolman. You can contact Shem. There are a few other neat things that they need, so I might be reaching out to some of you regarding that. But that's just exciting for those that are in need in our community. Another exciting thing that's coming is in early 2025, Santee M Excursions is starting rail bikes, and you can rent rail bikes to go from 18th Avenue down to Lake Shore Park. So these are exciting things that are coming, and I'm excited to see how that brings and who that brings to our community. It's a tourism opportunity for us. So moving forward, I just want to say, I'd like to see, and I just want to say thank you to all who ran for council. It's not easy to run, and I want to say congratulations to everybody who received votes. And it was a hard race when there's 12, but I just want to say congratulations, Counselor Sanchez, and Erin Hagie, and Chelseaa, and Ken, for the work that they put into that. And looking forward to what's coming next. And our next council meeting will be three of our counselors' last meeting, and they've served many years, so we will speak to that then. But moving forward, I was reading again parts of 13 Ways to Kill Your Community. If you've not read that book, it's an excellent book, and I know that they have it in the library. One of the things that the author Doug Griffiths said, and Chase has, sorry, Chief has quoted from this book recently as well. But as we work to make decisions for our community, I think it's important to keep this in mind, that we often make the mistake of someone being loud and angry for being right. We also often give more credence to the critics than they deserve. It is easy to sound smart when all you have to do is critique other people's actions. The critics fight, and the generally disinterested public at large doesn't want to get into a fight with them or be the next targets of those critics, so they give them the win. So as we go to make decisions, it's important to know that we have a greater community than what we often see, and each of us represents a number of people who have voted for us. than what we often see, and each of us represent a number of people who have voted for us, that we are to bring their voice to this decision-making table and make good decisions for our community. So thank you all for stepping up and doing that. Next item on the agenda. Oh, and I also want to say Thanksgiving's coming up. We won't see each other, so happy Thanksgiving to everybody. But the next item on the agenda is council business for the good of the order. So it's business that is related to council and is for the good of our order. So any council business for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, may I? So there's just a couple things. I also want to say thank you to the community, like Counselor-elect Ken Bronson said, for trusting me to be your voice. It meant a lot to me for everybody to reelect me to this position. The second thing is, I don't have the exact dates, but I thought that the Army Corps of Engineers was going to be having some sort of session to discuss the recreational and wildlife opportunities. So I just wanted to get that out to the public. I think on the 14th, it's between 6:00 and 8:00, maybe at the Lebanon Community College, Madam Mayor. Can you remind us?
They'll be here in this room on Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00.
Saturday also. Perfect. So I hope that people bring their concerns. I didn't see the Saturday one. I just saw daytime ones and nighttime ones, but not weekend ones. So there's a couple of opportunities for people to come and share what they'd like to include in these new plans outside of the drawdowns, and I hope that we make our voices heard that way. So I just don't want people to forget about that.
Any other council business for the good of the order?
Well, we're going to be painting windows soon. And so if anybody has friends or family that'd like to get together and have a window painting party, just let me know. I would love to help share some of those lovely windows, and I'll set you up with the paint and the brushes and the stuff that you need to be successful.
Thank you. Any other council business for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, if I may. I was really shocked a little bit that we had 12 people, but I was glad that they did. A lot of them got a vote. They did, and it was a good thing that they did it. However, there's one thing that I got on a little note here, that somebody said that some of our people on that list were not qualified, or whatever he said, that they're not good enough, and that bothers me. And so that's what I had to say, and that's the end of it. Thank you.
Any other council business? Hearing none. I'm going to close this meeting at 7:02, so Blair can go see his daughter and duct it into the National Honor Society.